The Tyler ISD Board Trustees was previously called a board of the presence of a court of a forum having established in meetings and duly called non-sim meetings has been hosted in the time and manner required. Thank you all for being here. We have reconvened with from executive that session with a little action to follow. First, we will say the prayer and pledge of this intention.
First time we thank you for giving us the privilege of being here tonight, coming together to make decisions for the benefit of 18,000 students in our district. I ask for your protection of the grand American experiment, one nation under God. Let us not forget that this country was founded with your blessings. Give us the grace to move forward, knowing that we are in this place at this time to fulfill our role as public servants. I ask for your guidance in representing your values and exhibiting the qualities that shine light on you. Help us remember your words. Yet those who wait for the Lord will gain new strength. They will mount up in wings like eagles. They will run and not be hit tired. They will walk and not become weary. For difficult decisions make us weary, but we claim that promise. Guide us to the decisions that will best serve you. Lord, we ask you to heal our community. Lead us to go forward in grace and strength so that we can grow together for the benefit of all. I thank you for those who lift us up in prayer and I ask that you soothe the hearts of those who hold here this. Bless all who are here tonight and give this board the will and the knowledge to make the most appropriate decisions. Guide us to make it through the COVID-19 pandemic in a way that the needs of all of our students are met and the education we're able to provide moves each of them substantially to successful student outcomes. I ask these things in the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas law. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you for that, Dr. Nation. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a little action coming out of the executive session, and that is the hiring of the principal of Dixie Elementary.
Mr. President, Ms. Washington, the public, we're pleased to bring this Kimberly Simmons to be the new principal at Dixie Elementary. She's here tonight with her husband. Ms. Simmons currently resides as an assistant principal at Owens Elementary. She's also a Tyler ISD graduate. We're extremely excited that we're able to have one of our own lead in Dixie Elementary now and for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for this time?
I'm going to give Kimberly Simmons as principal of Dixie Elementary School.
Okay, who has a second?
I have a second.
All right, all the members say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Ms. Simmons, are you here this evening? Would you like to come to the podium and just say a couple of words?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. White Washington, Superintendent, Dr. Marty Kopper, and to the remaining members of the school board. I want to start off by saying thank you so much for this opportunity. I am here with my husband, Justin Simmons. He is an assistant principal at Tyler, and we are Tyler natives and proud products of Tyler ISD. We have two children, a one-year-old son, Jackson, who just turned one this summer, and a high-year-old daughter, and she will be in kindergarten this year in Tyler ISD. So we are very invested in this district, and it is a blessing and honor to be able to serve in the district that raised not only me, but my husband as well. So once again, thank you so much for this opportunity, and I can't wait to get started.
All right, thank you. Congratulations. It is always exciting to see graduates come back and serve the district that they went to. So congratulations again, Simmons. Okay, now we're coming up to public participation. I do believe we have 12 speakers tonight. Everybody's gonna have three minutes apiece this time, since we have a few less than the last couple of meetings. We'll need a little more time. First, we have Charlotte Adams Graves.
Good evening, Mr. Washington. I hope I said it right. And to the Tyler ISD school board, my name is Charlotte Adams Graves, the president of NHPC East Texas Area Chapter, and I'm a retired administrator and a guidance counselor. What I have learned is that as an educator, your job is to not only hear about our students, but to really think that on campus it helps them reach their full potential. I believe we sometimes feel like this because we believe our job is to merely give assignments and look at them. It's so much more. It's about closing the gap, making the school wide responsibility. It's about bringing the staff together to ensure students are monitored and conference monthly to discuss grades and social needs. It's about hiring faculty and staff who understand and can capitalize on our students' culture and ability. It's about giving parents tips and tools on how to prepare their child for a disciplined calendar, all of which I can experience in doing that. At my previous campus in Colleen Independent School District, I counseled their grade watching. They pulled that every Monday to counsel with students during their lunch period instead of just doing testing of paperwork. We also made grad calls to the kiddo's homes instead of reporting their failures or needing improvement. As a result, students only, only, they worked hard to receive those grad calls, but we found their test scores also dramatically improved. Tyler ISD school board test scores disparity are a big issue for me and should not be taken lightly. So I challenge you, just as Freeman Sterling would say, do it. Make sure that we're taking care of all of the students. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graves. Okay, next up with Clayton Nail. Hi, Clayton.
Hello, members of the school. My name is Clayton Nail, and I am here as a teacher, a parent, and a citizen of Tyler, Texas to urge you to consider the true weight of the decision before you about opening our schools. While many people want to see a return to normalcy, the current scientific data does not support that as a safe and viable option. TDA has already made provisions for school districts to spend the first four weeks of the school year as online-only, with the ability to extend that in additional four weeks. Smith County currently reports 1,762 cases with 10 deaths in regard to COVID-19, which gives us a little over half a percent mortality rate in our area. To some, that may not seem like a lot of people, but let's consider the actual impact. Tyler, Texas employs over 3,000 people and hosts just over 18,000 students. Are we willing to sacrifice the lives of 15 employees and 90 students for the sake of returning to normal? I understand that either decision you make of returning to campuses or staying home is going to upset different parts of our community. However, one of the options upsets people while flattening the curve and keeping people healthy, and the other option increases exposure and infections that can lead to death. The teachers of this district are more well-equipped to handle online teaching and learning environments than they were in the spring. The investments in the campus and one-to-one devices already show that you have faith in that ability too. Let those investments save the district the cost that will invariably come from opening our schools and exposing every staff member to a virus that mandates a minimum 14-day quarantine after positive testing. Let that investment propel equality and equitable access to all of our students. If you still support opening our campuses as we watch the numbers of infections and deaths continue to rise, I ask that you first make a list of the names of 15 employees and 90 students that you are willing to let die. If you still support opening our schools after completing those lists, then I fully expect to see them published with the return orders along with the enrollment of your own children into on-campus education. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Nail. Okay, next we have Michael J. McDermott.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to address you. My name is Michael McDermott, a Tyler resident of many years, and God willing, many more. I believe it was Chairman Washington who said, "There is too much race and not enough race." I long remember those words when people talk about them wanting too much, as was done in the Parton Law last week. If we give them too much, they don't want more. These hurtful words often lie below the public's statements of a school named having no meaning. It's benign. Truth be told, it's not. Public education is a public domain belonging to we, the people. The great divide is us versus them. This thinking casts us where we are today as a city and nation. We can do better. Political references to the word justice mean to make right. Justice is first and foremost a relational term. People living in right relationship with God, one another, and the natural creation. From a scriptural point of view, justice means loving our neighbor as we love ourselves and is rooted in the character and nature of God. As God is just and loving, so we are called to do justice and live in love. The physical school structure is almost finished. Waiting us is what happens inside. This rests squarely on your shoulders. Justice must be served, or a segment of our charges will not participate in Tyler's tomorrow. It won't be as bright as it could be and should be. I mean, pause an analogy. When a superior football team plays a less talented, derisive, unwritten role, the coach of the superior team won't run up the score. He puts in his less talented players, giving them an opportunity play they might not have had. Likewise, the losing team can choose to do the same, knowing the final score will not be effective. This is fair play, sportsmanship, teaching everyone an important lesson. Even though we're competitors, we ultimately have valuable gifts to contribute. So too in Tyler academics, we have a moral obligation to do no less than allow each student to participate to their full potential. This will positively impact the new school's culture. It's not cancel culture, but change culture. Where a more just environment replaces the old and wounds are healed. Everyone is on a level playing field. That is gold, that is society, that is future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McDermott. Okay, next we have Laura Oates. Ms. Stones.
Good evening, school board. I'm here for the school board. I might introduce myself. Recently, I've been known for as Trudy's mom, and I think you all know who Trudy is. I'd like to welcome Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez, thank you for being a true leader. You were the only one out of all of these people in the room to reach out to my daughter after she wrote her letter and after the terroristic threats, and our family truly thanks you from the bottom of our heart for your leadership. To the rest of the board, one doesn't have to look far to see the institutional racism that is infected and continues to wound our students. One only has to look around this very room. In this room right now, we have administrators who use the N-word in their offices, ones that punish students of color at disproportionate rates, ones that endorse curriculum that still pulls false narratives about Black, Indigenous, and other persons of color, and ones that rank school and district transfers to affluent, white families who didn't even follow the rules. Just ask Mr. Lowe, a Black father who followed the protocol for school transfers, and you denied him last April, this past April. How do you explain that? Your quote "return to learn plan" disproportionately quotes students of color in a position of being left behind or choose face-to-face learning even when that might not be the safest choice for that student. That is a civil rights issue. Local investigative reporters, here is your chance. Right here in front of you is a noteworthy piece ready to be investigated and exposed. My desire for you trustees is to do as our not very distant neighbor Arlington ISD has done. They, this past June, called for a resolution and ordered an external review of institutional racism within their school district. Are you scared of what we might find in Tyler ISD? When our kids go to a school where there is equity, our scores will improve. We still have a national spotlight on us. Right now, ESPN is currently doing a three-month-old piece that will parent through the start of the school year. They started this piece before my daughter's letter came out. The journalists have spent this last month interviewing your teachers, parents, students, and community members. The piece is going to end in one of two ways, and we have the choice to figure out which way it's going to go. Number one, Tyler ISD can continue to victimize their students through institutional racism? Or number two, TIS can call for a resolution for an external review and then use that information to create a plan of healing through racial reconciliation? That ESPN journalist is online right now. Board members, what will the ending be?
Okay, thank you, Stones. Next, Stacy Clark, next.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Stacy Clark, and I'm the mom of two school-aged white daughters, the oldest of which is still at TIS. Let me off my notes for a second. I'm a white person raised in this community. I know the white rhetoric, okay? It's not that bad. They're making a big deal out of nothing. The past is the past. I was raised with these racist ideas in my mind so that we could continue on promoting white people, white students, and persecuting minorities in our community. I've been overwhelmed with issues that my Black daughters face. I'm asking for you to pass a resolution ordering and sternly with you for addressing them to define systemic racism. The reasons this review is necessary are too many to count. As a mother and a father that my Black children do not go to school and come home having experience a day free from teachers and administrators who perpetrate our children based on the color of their skin. This also harms the white students. This is another thing I'm gonna add, just about my notes. When white students grow up in this environment that promotes Black children being punished more, the racism, you know, then they perpetuate it. They grow up with ideas that are false, and that's how they treat them goes on and on. It's time to stop. Stop. So here's the first incident. There's been many. But the first one in fourth grade, Rice Elementary, my daughter had a crush on a white boy. That white boy happened to be the teacher's son. When the teacher found out about the crush, she wasn't necessary to announce to the whole class, "By the way, my son is not allowed to date Black girls." Now, and how did you know? My daughter's students had seen this developmentally inappropriate and shamed by her teacher in front of her whole class. And that was the first time she really experienced, you know, like, you're Black, you're not good enough in school. Fast forward, this is fast spring. While meeting with the government administration at Hubbard on the appropriate discipline principles for Black students versus white students, in an attempt to explain away the issues, I was told by administrator, "We have a Black assistant principal." That response was a candid statement, "See, we have a Black president, so racism is dead in America." Board of trustees, you have the duty to make sure all students have a safe place to learn with educators that are educated in teaching and preparing students. So tonight, I'm asking you to call a resolution somewhere to that Arlington ISD toward the systemic racism happening in our schools perpetrated by our teachers and administrators. And we'll be here each month asking and demanding until you do this. The time is now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Clark. Next, we have Nikisha Allen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would be the first to address the board and see what some people who wants to give a collective statement, but due to time constraints, it will be broken out among us. When my time expires, they'll release six other people to follow where I live off. First of all, we'd like to express how pleased we are with unanimous vote to change the names of both our collection of high schools. We believe this is a great first step in breaking down one of the many barriers in our school districts for our minority students. We need to raise the issue of any Confederate civilization. There's a flag right now at every public school honoring Richard Hubbard, and the fact literally uses Confederateity in its words. Thank you for taking care of this matter.
Okay, Ms. Allen. Next, we have Wilma Daniel Mitchell. Good evening, Ms. Mitchell.
Good evening. My name is Wilma Daniel. I'm two states. Again, I too would like to thank the board for unanimously voting to change the name of our two local high schools. Although this typical iceberg is easy to change the name, but it's difficult to change the answer and the part. So I'd like to thank you for starting with the name changes. I, as an unboard member citizen, know that you have a lot to work before, so I hope you as well, you know that too. We the people, we have several concerns about the future of our school system. The process to choose the names of schools has been putting input from the community as well as the students. We have a model of how to process that process should go from our last school board. We can meet at different locations in our community to attend those meetings. The location should be easily accessible to everyone, making sure to include the African-American and Hispanic communities. We also need to have a website or email in place where ideas, comments, and concerns can be addressed. A committee including a few constituents from each district is ideal. It is important and necessary that the committee members be chosen by elected board members, prominent community leaders, and not just TIS administration. I'd like to say that again. It is important and necessary that the committee members be chosen by elected school board leaders, prominent community leaders, and not just TIS administration. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Next, we have Taquan White.
Good evening. We the people, there should be explicit bias training for every staff member in the school district to be certified and with the country and the business shown that we need that it is interpreted to keep those biases out of our school. There are also people who are not happy about the school name changing, and we need to be sure that those students and staff need to know they're safe to report inappropriate actions, comments, behavior, et cetera, with the confidence that they will be properly, effectively investigated and necessarily handled accordingly. Non-white students perceive more disciplinary reactions than white students. And again, specifically, Black boys, this is another area that training will help. What kind of special training is there for officers and security guards for working with students, particularly students of color? If there isn't any, how can we get this done? My name is Taquan White. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Taquan. Next, we have Mission Barn.
Hi, Harvey. We the people, students are responding to the APP based on discretionary placement while others try mandatory placement. There is a huge disparity of Black and Brown students, specifically Black boys, assigned to this alternative campus versus white students who are sent based on discretionary placement. We need to be transparent about why. Whose discretion is being used with making this decision? What are we going to do specifically to make sure this is fair across the board? African-American students perform more academically than any other students in our district, and again, specifically, Black boys. Our district has the La Academia program to close the achievement gap for Hispanic students. What specifically are we going to do to address the deficit for African-American children? How do we get more minority students enrolled in the GT program and make the classes? Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Barn. And next, we have Terry Barn.
And Terry Barn, I'm the fifth speaker today for VP. The number of Black and Brown students graduating from the district, as we see, is right around about 899%, which is well above state average, which is great compared to other districts. But the number of students who are college-ready is only about 6.5%, around 7%. Put that in perspective for you. For every 400 Black graduates, there are 26 of them that are college-ready. That means minority students, and again, specifically, Black boys, tested for lower level than any, at a lower level than any other group of students. This is across the world with ACT, SAT, TSI, and et cetera. What programs and strategies other than Abbott can we put in place to get our students ready for college? Also, what can we do to ensure our students graduate with an associate's or bachelor's degree? It is not enough to simply get them started at the higher level, the learning, high-level learning institution. How many Tyler ISD students are actually graduating from college? And that is a big issue in this town, and it kind of stems from the education, from the education standpoint or how well the child is educated. Also, we would like to see or an implementation of African-American studies placed at the high school level and also have it be a graduation requirement. For the simple fact, as y'all know, some of these comments that have been online, some people are calling for a mass punishment of these children. And I know children can be children, and I know children can be productive learning providers. I call for a mass education of these students, you know, the ones that are saying, "Oh, probably only slaves, and only, you know, Black people only 13% are slaves." I have the comments here. I'm going to decline to read them, but I do call for a mass education of all students on African-American studies, which I feel like is something that this district has liked in and would help with, I believe, racial understanding, for lack of a better term. Thank you very much. I've been Terry Barn. Thank y'all again for both unanimously to change the name of the school, but for a lot of us in this town, that was just a tip of the iceberg. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barn. Okay, we have Gabrielle Jackson, next.
On 27 schools in our district, there are eight African-American principals, and only three of them are male. Of the three male principals, only one, Mr. Floyd, is at a secondary campus. The problem on top of that is RISE is an alternative school. Students who attend there already have a deep-flick of some sort. Out of the 1,223 teachers in our district, how many are non-white? Students need to see Students need to see teachers, principals, counselors, et cetera, who look like them. This allows them to see that you are capable of doing great things and give them a greater sense that they belong. What are the hiring practices for our district? How is it decided what principals and teachers will be assigned? What changes are made when there are no improvements at campuses? And also, as a student currently attending, I feel like that our school is, a lot of the respects of it is still stuck in the fifties. It's having an effect on students. We're not having fun. We feel like we're entertaining the older generation when we should be entertaining our peers. So I hope that you guys can also evaluate how to modernize more areas of our school with the new name and the new building.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. And our last speaker this evening is Amber Phillips. How's it going?
Good evening. I'm the last one to say. Looking to the upcoming school year, in the middle of an unprecedented pandemic, what are the plans to make strategic or committed to the progress of our students? College school chronicles cannot be the responsibility of the parents. The district needs to provide at least to students at no cost to the families unless damaged. There are so many parents that are trying to figure out how to pay for unexpected costs already due to COVID-19. We cannot expect them to take on any more financial responsibility. Last year, students received chronicles and had to return them in good condition at the closing of the school year. The same receipt should be used this African school year. The plan moving forward is to have a trace parent relationship with the board and superintendent with hopes of working together, and we'd love to hear from the board members regarding items and concerns that we can take back specifically to our communities. So I would speak up for this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that does it for participation this evening. Next item we have on the agenda is the approval of minutes from our workshop on June fourth. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And it's approved. Okay, business, legal, finance, and consent agenda. Okay, we have A through I here. And forward, do we want to pull any of these? Yes, we do. We want to take them one by one, Dr. Crawford, or do we want to pull E?
E.
And go ahead and approve A through I with the exception of E.
F.
One. Okay, can we pull F too? All right. Okay, so we'll go ahead and, yeah, we'll, we have A, B, C, D, G, H, and I. And then we'll pull and talk about E and F. Do I have a motion to do such?
Mr. President, I move that we approve E through D and G through I.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Hager. Go ahead. Second. All right, Ms. Martinez, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And motion carries? Okay, now, we will go ahead and pull I to E and talk about that specifically in the second reading of our policy on naming of facilities.
Thank you. This is the second reading of the CW Local regarding the naming of facilities. We spent a lot of time talking about this at the board workshop that we had here. Just what we made in the first time and the second time is between I to number three and four, that little paragraph that starts with the person's new name, that was actually moved up because it was formerly located by I number four. We also on I number one, ideals. What was the other? No ideals. Principal ideals. If you Google that, it has something to do with the math, wasn't it? So people use Google all the time. So just went ahead and looked at it because we're trying to get those values, et cetera. So it was kind of a repeat in there. So those are the adjustments that we have on there. Over to questions and comments.
Okay. Board, go ahead and Dr. Chapman.
I basically don't have any questions regarding the policy I have up there. And I kind of agree with it. Mine specifically regards to the current name change of the board through my voice seminars last week in regards to, my opinion in regards to the election process and how it could be done possibly. I still feel strongly about having input from the community in regards to a committee, simply because of the amount of input we had going through the controversy of actually getting to the point where we actually could consider naming the school. I think that's important that we allow the community to have some input on that from the perspective that we want our community to be involved with our schools more so than what they may have in the past. Looking at some of the situations that we have in some of the schools where you don't even have PTA, you know, you wonder why those things don't exist. Is it because the image or the perspective that they get is unwelcoming? So I think anytime we have an opportunity to allow the community to have input, I think it's important to allow that and hear what they're saying about how they perceive things. And this has been a very controversial issue, so I felt like it would be good to have their input in trying to select the names. The process was described last time. I think I agree with that process. This policy is well-written. I don't have a problem with the policy. But this particular instance in regards to the naming of students, I strongly feel that there should be a committee of communities representation.
So I'll just jump into this. The way it's designed right now is you do actually have nine folks from each school, slots, nine slots from each school. Principal, a football coach slash athletic coordinator, and a faculty member. Three students and three parents. You also have a process of submitting via form starting tomorrow, but we'll go through this back end of the presentation tonight, that everybody in the community, who will address the Tyler ISD, will be able to submit their recommendation and provide a little bit of a brief snippet about why they feel, as an individual, not a group, but as an individual, that that name should be taken before the board. And let me address the PTA thing real quick. John Tyler does not have a PTA because it was mismanaged. So let's not blame the campus, prior campus administration, or anything else that went on there. There was an actual, it was sort of lacking in membership. And the one thing that you've got to do with the Texas PTA is to make sure that it maintains a certain level of membership. When I first got here, we had one. But if your leadership changes in the PTA, we saw a decline in membership. That's why it's not there. You have to be suspended, but you have to be out of the PTA game for a couple of years and then you actually recreate it again. I'm sure Mr. Lang, with all his experiences and utilization in his twenty-one, twenty-two career, twenty-two-plus career, a year career, will be able to get that rego again. So that's what we're talking about here. There are also other campuses that work through the same thing. So I want to make sure that in that statement said, there is some defense to that and some anecdotal evidence of why that occurred. It was not that we get away with it on purpose, but because we had poor PTA leadership. Okay, there you go. So that's another thing on the other side. And I'm open to what the board, the board would like to do on this. A lot of y'all have expressed hesitancy. I think if we start talking about the one hundred and fifteen thousand people that live inside of our school system or near that, it's going to be very hard to get every one of them into a meeting. I know the ones that are interested will come. I get it. We're talking about some time here. We also have some other issues that go along with this. We have a new website that's going to be rolling out in August. A name decided project that would be something that would be valuable for us. We won't be able to switch our website over to possibly the 2021 school year or 2021 year. That's, those are some other things why we would like to go ahead and move in on this. Because I think y'all expressed that before school started, that we could have this turned around. That's why we put those systems in place. We put some mission program in place, just like we did a lot of surveying, et cetera. And we also have that group, that focus group that I've proposed, that we can actually go forward and utilize them with a pretty diverse representation, and very clear about that for both campuses. We want diverse representations. I can't do anything about who the principals are and then the football coaches are. They are what they are. They are the ethnicity that they are. But as far as them building the rest of their focus group team, absolutely, diversity is extremely important. And we also check off, as far as the parent box, we also check off the student box. That's kind of where I'm at right now. Certainly prefer the items, will change direction as the board see fit to re-circumvent.
Let me make a comment in regards to what was just said. In regards to PTA, explanation, great explanation. I think it's really important that the public know those things and that they can hear it from administration as regards to why them exist. Sometimes they're complained because people are not educated to the facts. So it's a part of that we do whatever we can to educate individuals when they have questions regarding situations like you just mentioned with the PTA. So I get a very good explanation. I think anyone who has any questions will be, should be satisfied with that explanation. Appreciate it.
That man right there, the new principal at John Tyler High School, and I can tell you that my six years with him, he was not black in communicating with his parents. I can't speak to the prior administrations. If they were asked those questions, they gave someone a type of answer, that would be the man that folks need to go to or get that question. You know, our school system is run a little differently. And then we had thirty campuses to eighteen thousand students. I understand if you go down the road to a smaller school system, the superintendent can answer one of those questions. So we are an effective principal to run that campus. I think that John Tyler has been extremely happy with the parent engagement that they're doing. I'm all about other campuses. Ask those, ask the principals that question. If they don't like it, they don't get an answer, we would love to help out. But the principals should be able to answer that question.
My thought is, I'm more of a middle schooler than a licensed principal, so I understand that. We were direct, so I know what the state was doing.
Outstanding. Word, sir.
Mr. Dees, I'll hear about it when I get home, if I don't say this. There's an organization called Council of Tyler PTAs. They have a mission of supporting all the, all the school PTAs. They know in great depth the process of getting a suspended PTA back in good standing with Texas PTA. And so I know that group of folks would love to work with any campus that currently has a suspended PTA, getting it back on track.
Great. Okay, so back to the policy. And then I think, yeah, let's discuss the process that we can have within this policy that we've already alluded to, but do any other board members with actual policy here feel the need to?
Yes, sir. There's one change that I think would be prudent for us to consider. I support the policy as written. I would propose that we also add a time limit on when to name a facility or a portion of a facility after an individual. I mean, what requirement that they no longer be living and if they have been deceased for more than twelve months. They, we all can think of examples of people who have disappointed us at different stages in life with a policy that says that we wait to name a portion of the person who is already deceased. It limits the opportunity for them to mess up in a way that would cause us to reconsider wanting to have that portion of the facility named. And a twelve-month period after their passing is a little bit of a pull-and-off period. So if I would rush when someone passes away in twelve months, I just want... I support the policy as written. I would propose that we add an additional requirement to an individual who is changing the facility or is still in this one.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments regarding the policy in itself and the proposal in which Reverend Hager has made?
I think that's prudent. Fair challenge. I don't think that's a bad thing you should do. Fair enough.
I like somewhat agree because I had the opportunity to work with them, give them that setting, and we could try to name something after them, and they had very difficult time with it themselves. So I think that, you know, your restrictions may have some validity to it in regards to that.
Also, limits kind of the politicking, campaigning goes along with this, or limiting to someone who's already passed away.
The second observation.
Absolutely. I think it's, it's, um, the issues.
Remember one, please. Time nation, which one? Is it on?
I think it's a good idea to, and then it would take care of those consequences.
I agree as well. I should probably leave that two thousand once. Come and debate it.
I've kind of, I don't know, I've just over the last two minutes gone back and forth on, you know, and I'm, it's the will of the board. I'm okay with it, and it is prudent. Sometimes I do think it's sweet when you can give a gift to somebody that's living. But that's not, this isn't what we're all about anyway. Of course, Amy's not here, but if the majority of the board is on board with a twelve-month or at least deceased before they're named, then, you know, I think we should be forward with that. So I see how Dr. Crawford talked to our attorney, Mr. Hardy. We'll await the results of that conversation.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. I didn't know if that had anything to do with this specific.
I'm concerned about this policy, and I, as a board, desire to move on with selecting new names. If you, you know, speak up on this, let's let the attorney address the board's office.
I'll also try not to mess it up. Meeting board, thank you for a quick opportunity to speak. Briefly, Dr. Crawford asked me, what are our options tonight in light of the present discussion? I really see that there are three. You can try to craft some language on the fly and adopt the policy this evening. It really won't have been through our usual process of a first and second reading. We do that. You can vote on the policy that's before you in a second reading tonight, if you choose. Or I think you can essentially kick this down the road and have some revision made to the policy and address it at a future board meeting, at the cost of perhaps moving as quickly as you would like. I will also point out that while I don't have a position on Reverend Hager's suggested addition, it seems there's some more consensus surrounding that. Anytime we have a local policy, I would point out that either this board or any other future board can simply adopt its own local policy. So I can't tell you that anything we do as far as, you know, a person being deceased for a period of at least twelve months would have staying power beyond the Tyler ISB board giving it that staying power. I've also separately had questions about, could the district have a moratorium on changing names for some period of time, months or years? And the answer is yes, but a future board could also decide no. So just want you to be aware of kind of the impact of that decision and what your options are tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. What I propose, and so I do value the need to progress here, and because of the provision that I'm suggesting that does not impact the name of the school, but only a portion of the school, then... And you just go ahead and act on the policy as written tonight. But consistent with our approach for approving modifications to the policy, that we put that into my mind for a future modification.
Absolutely. One thing that I can tell you that right now current operations go this way as far as naming a portion of the facility after something. We just wanted to do that with Martin Edwards, Dr. Martin Edwards, along with Al Harris. February is usually when, if I get, y'all, y'all put this on me, but I think y'all were getting a pardon with requests. And so y'all went ahead and said, come up with a system. So it's by February is when that actually happens. And then I actually write it in front of the board for y'all to vote on. So a recommendation from the administration. So I wanted to, we got a little bit of time until February. I think we'll probably wind up working on this policy sooner rather than later to insert something that y'all feel that sounds like is most appropriate. So recommendations to devote the policy as it is. You have clear understanding to the administration to work on inserting further language in a way and bring it back to y'all under judgment.
Okay, yeah, I think that's wise to do and gives us some time to think about it as well. So I'll go ahead and entertain the motion to approve all the steps.
Just a clarification before we vote on this in regards to the, the makeup of the committee. Can you explain that and I'll make sure I understand. Each school, that John Tyler and probably will have nine representatives from each school.
Correct.
And three of those will be student representatives and three will be parents. And then the other six will be faculty.
Three, three approved. There's nine.
We agree.
There's nine, she gets a principal, football coach, athletic coordinator, and then a staff person. Then you have three students and then three parents.
And how they select it? Do the principals do that or?
Well, certainly. I think Mr. Martin would appreciate a little level of parenting if he needed to. But I do think as far, and then I'm sure he'll get the last of this existing faculty members by students over there. I'm sure Dr. C. Lee is pretty good indication of people that would be fair, people that would be, would take into consideration a lot of, a lot of the factors over there. But including diversity, making sure it's a diverse representation, making up that at, at Lee. That is John Tyler.
And before we move, move on, you spoke a little bit about the timeline. You know, I'm all in favor of, you know, expediency and, and like we talked about before, if, when school starts, you know, in the usual year, this, this being behind us and for all your internet, I mean, website reasons and ordered uniforms and everything else. As far as timeline goes, can you just walk us through that little bit, that piece of it?
Do you want it now or do you want it in superintendent's staff reports?
Let's go superintendent's staff reports. Go ahead and on this policy.
Vote to approve, proceed to vote.
Have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. On the board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, guys, having the motion carries and we will circle back to that process in superintendent's staff. Okay. Now, Mr. Newsom wanted to pull that up, which is our approval of goals for successful student outcomes. Slow board policy, maybe exhibit, I just want for our packets.
And your packet is our successful student outcome goals, the eighty-sixth legislature that just wrapped up. Just wrapped up. It wrapped up last May. That was, yeah, so last May. But in the footends of legislation, every school system in the state must have goals. Or others, mathematics and college of career education, CC. We've kind of been living this goal-setting era with the long start governance. And this board in twenty sixteen went through the long start governance, that being that it's a very close place. And pretty much got there because we had a campus or two that were chronic to low performance. Since then, we've eradicated those low performing campuses and had some good success stories that came through these goals. And so codifying this policy or this, the goals into the policy along with matching that up to each goal at the campus level, which I think is also a requirement of the legislature as well, is something we're ready for y'all tonight, is the second reading of these goals as we go forward. You went out there to one of them again?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to Mr. Newsom initially.
Basically, I have a general comment and we've been dialoguing about this. And I, I have strong feelings about the disparity between the ethnic groups within our history. And I'm very concerned about the scoring of Hispanic and the African-American students, which fall significantly behind of the whites in our history. So that has been a forefront in my mind since coming on board and a lot of everything else they've been dealing with. But I'm, I'm very concerned about that and I have a common in history because I know in the past years it was much worse. And I know that it hasn't improved significantly. But unfortunately, you know, I have high standards, always have, always will. And I, I hate to think that we are meeting those standards based on these goals that we have established. I don't see it narrowing the gap very much with the goals that's established this time or the next five years. I would like to see some things different than the goals that this is admitting, maybe internally within the district, where we actually look at going, or seeing the goals that we turn into PTA. Because it means that much to me and, and that we put forth especially to make sure that our kids, the minority kids within the community are getting the help they need. And I'm not saying that they're not getting it now. And I'm not saying that the district is not. I'm saying that we need to look at all aspects of it. I, I think that we need to have a lot more community involvement. And I, I, to, to achieve this is going to take a little while. So I am disappointed in the goals that was established by first read and I was simply shocked. But I, I can understand some of the situations that we've been faced with. But I think we can't allow those situations to continue to exist and stifle insurance growth in our community. And we should be targeting those individuals that's not achieving what we would like them to achieve. So that's the reason I'm, I'm having problems with it. And a lot of it may be just personally because I always had high expectation because I had to without that. So that's what I see with this particular aspect that we discussed about. So I may be exaggerating because I have a tendency to do that sometimes, but I had high expectation. And I don't want a low expectation because I think that with low expectations sometimes that you can get satisfied. And I think that that maybe will happen with some of it. I think that we are looking at some positive things within the district that will incentivize our teachers, the good teachers that want to do this to make a difference. So I, I'm not being negative from that standpoint. I'm just, I have higher expectations than what this goes. Actually, it's a state that, that's what I'm getting.
Really noted. And I think I've got staff in the room that have been working on this for six years. I don't think any of us had a low expectation by any means. It takes a while to turn a battleship. Yeah, it's been six years since I arrived here. You and I have had conversations about, or the email exchange about what shape we were. And there's no doubt that if the district wasn't making improvement in minority scores, we would be in the same jam we were in when there was ten incremental required schools here, if not worse. So certainly the accountability system rewards growth. I think we are making tremendous growth with our students at the same rate between the ethnicities. Some one is not outpacing the other as far as growth goes. Now, without a love for our kids that are struggling the most to boost themselves where their growth is exponential, absolutely. And I think that we have been very clear with our principals, our campus principals to make that happen. It's not going to happen on a thirteen, nineteen, early campus pathway. It's going to happen at each one of our campuses. We've got great stories that are being told at individual campuses. Dixie being one, Dixie being one, there's formerly approved required, Douglas formerly approved required. Unsubstantial amount of African-American kid, their, their makeup over there, the majority is Spanish, African-American, to where they were a reconstituted school because of, of passed legislation. They're now a D campus because their kids are doing better. So do note on that and understand that the goals are here. I'll tell you what, it's a heck of a time to be setting goals.
I know.
I was going to go ahead and say that. I think everybody understands that. We have some internal assessments that we'll be doing as soon as we get back, whether that be digital or in-person learning. And certainly we want to see where our kids are at. And then those, those assessments that will be, that will be conducted throughout the year will give some good feedback as far as board taking that. I will say this, if board chooses to adopt these goals and I put them in policy, we can always have, it's a local policy. We can always have the opportunity to go back and to do this. We can meet our statutory requirement and continue to work on these things. Your expression's in there and our expression's in there as well, we need to do better for all our kiddos and those that have been traditionally not performing or waiting to be.
And I don't want to make it seem like I'm putting all the responsibility on the district. I mean, I think that the community somehow is still an aspect of being a vital part and, and they, I think the community needs to step up and see what they can do. Tyler's a great community and have a lot of resources. And I think that we need to call upon our resources so that we can all work together for this issue, not just T I S D, but the community as a whole.
Thank you for saying that. It'll make the staff feel better.
I thought I better say that. I didn't want anybody to attack.
I've got pretty much skin. You tell me what you need to tell. I've been screening out of that bunch of Aggies and Longhorns and LSE Tigers back in my day. But my staff really does work extremely hard. And I appreciate you saying, saying that, that you recognize that they're working on it. We can't get better results and we'll continue to do better because that's all we've done.
Well, we would have improved as much as we have if you hadn't been working on it. It is just a shock to me. You know, I mean, I hadn't looked at that.
That's right.
So it, it's, you know, it's shocking.
Understanding that. Yes, sir.
I had one question on progress monitoring measures. So they're, they're all essentially grade levels specifically projected to pass third grade star. Just curious what measure we're going to use to project for a kindergarten or a first grader, second grader, what we're going to use to project passing a star.
Okay, Dr. Hanson, since y'all were over there talking.
We were talking about.
I know you were talking about Reverend here. Mr. or Reverend Hager has asked a very important question. He's going to repeat.
Yes, sir.
You're going to listen to me.
Yes, sir.
The question was the progress monitoring measures that for across these three areas, say, students are projected to pass third grade star. And what's the measure that we're going to use to determine whether or not they're going, they're projected to pass?
So we are using the, the star renaissance this, to determine to project the passing of star this year. And then our PTA also has, that has required us to do diagnostic testing for K through two. And we're using the M class for that, which has the dibs component.
And then one just kind of overhaul, I've shared the same discomfort Mr. Newsom has with these goals. The part that, that allowed me to get comfortable with them now is the uncertainty around setting goals right now. We don't know where our kids ended and we really have no idea where they're, how they're going to show up. So for me to, to pound the table and say, oh, in twenty twenty-four, we should be doing better. I'm really worried how we're going to do in twenty twenty-one. And so I'm, I'm comfortable with these goals with the same reservation that I hope we can do better. But from where we sit today, this seems like a fair way to start.
Yeah, usually you're concerned with how your kids are doing in school. All these things have to do with how they're doing in school. And it's like my main goal right now is to get the kids in school, you know, just how are we going to do that? And I, I'll tell you this much, my thoughts also on being in school and achieving that. We don't have our kids working with and in front of teachers. Our most vulnerable are going to be falling behind at a higher rate. I feel like we need engagement in, in those kids that are struggling the most need that engagement so they can, they can catch up. So that's just my two cents.
Well, instructional consistency, instructional equity are buzzwords that people like to use a lot. There's no doubt that that's going to be a big influence on statistical reliability on either star or anything else that we do. So I think Austin, my speaking, Austin speaking in general of the agency, maybe even some legislators now. It's so hardcore standardized testing, high stakes testing. If y'all know me, I always say that, that our high stakes testing, our assessments, we're able to do away with those sometimes, but you got to assess where kids are at, seek to learn. It's the high stakes that makes people a little bit uneasy, but during this little period that we're going through right now, then the things I just mentioned about the inconsistencies in instructional delivery, delivering inconsistencies at home. The one thing that's been, that makes our system great or any school system great, whether it be public, charter or private, is that when you go to school, you know that there's going to be some type of equity in the delivery instruction. Most kids are going to get exposed with a certain level of curriculum because you have them to bear. If, if, if parents choose to, to maybe not send their kids to inverse learning, what is the home environment like? Is there support and encouragement for structure there or is there none? So yeah, there's a lot of concerns there. Don't really have a solution for y'all on that yet. But we'll certainly get there. So I think it's been a good conversation on it. We'll continue to work on these as well.
Okay, again, I thought through comments before I entertain the motion to approve item F. Okay, I'll entertain the motion to approve item F.
I'm going to approve item F.
Have a motion. About a second?
Second.
Okay, on the board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I stand.
On standing, so the motion carries five, zero, an abstention. Okay. We're moving on to our curriculum instruction consent and shutdown. And does anybody want to pull any items before we go ahead and entertain the motion to approve items A through T?
I had a question. We got, I had a question before we do that. On the student code conduct version that I had, excuse me, version I had electronic that didn't show any changes. Are there any material changes to the student code conduct?
Coming up this year, it's not a legislative year. We expect obviously the next year to get material changes. Been here, been, was pretty, was working on fairly well last year. We've been doing a new guidance coming down to PTA regarding changes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on anything before we go ahead? Here and now, I'll go ahead and entertain the motion to approve items A through T. So move. Okay, you have a second?
Second.
Okay, on the board, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes. Superintendent and staff reports. Okay, first we have a report on law purchase fees.
In your packet, we have Mary Russell, who's executive director, financial district tier nine, that, that's in her side of the board chart. We have a report on cooperative purchasing fees. That's an annual report that has to be provided to the school. Just so y'all know what the fees are for purchasing co-op, mercy co-op, state, like for better terms, state bid.
If it's a cooperative effort to, to.
If it's a cooperative effort to, to determine vendors we use to make our purchase.
There you go. On page one thirty, you go through there and talk about the fees that are associated that if we ever use a person co-op, like the recent seven, seven service center or, um, so on page one thirty. Fairly, okay, nice. One more time over. Um, or by board or has been as a cooperative as well. You can see what the, uh, different fees are there for all of those different purchasing co-ops. If you have any questions, we can entertain those for you. Maybe Miss Russell can answer those for you as well.
Okay, thank you. If you have any questions about that, go ahead and go to item B, which is return to learn update.
So you, you have a, a PowerPoint foundation that you can follow along. I'll try to do it from my seat out here. I want to put a disclaimer out there first. The week before we broke from, for, uh, for summer break, we received T E A guidance, especially on attendance and funding, and what you could and you couldn't do. During the middle of the break last week, last week, no. Week before, on the July, after July four, the summer break that we did, that we usually have, we received public health guidance as well. I think we received something, something yesterday from the governor as well. Um, that gave a lot of authority to public health districts across the state, across the state. And you can see where they're used to utilizing some of those, um, measures already. So in saying that, um, you know, since March, it's been a very jumpy process. Where we thought we were going to actually come back to school at the very back end of the semester last year, not even having graduations and to be allowed to have graduations under very limited circumstances, very limited cir, very limited structures for transportation of students to summer school. And those got to leak again a little bit. We started talking about capacity limits. And those got to leak again a little bit. And then jump back to where we are then. So the plan that we do have here is for public consumption. Talk about grace on Sundays, and we talk about the other six days of the week as well. We realize people are going to be mad if we go back to school. We realize that people are going to be mad if we wound up doing everything digital. We realize that people are going to be upset if we have athletics with no one in the stands. We, we know people are going to be upset if we don't have athletics. So, um, I think that you'll talk to most superintendents and even school boards, to misunderstand, there's just, people are going to be split on what we should be doing or not. So what we're trying to do is effectively run a school system that has the, the digital choice built into it. That's going to be throughout your plan. Also talk about some of the, uh, safety and hygienic measures that we're going to be implementing. This is just an executive summary. A more in-depth plan will be available for public consumption here in the near future. Here we go. I'll just read some bullets to you. Implementing instructional practices to provide assistancy across learning environments and probably put as best as possible there. The, the Blake program is a blended, uh, learning and digital education program. Allows students and teachers to transition between in-school and at-home digital learning models if needed. The board here purchased the new L M S, the new learning management system. A unifying learning management system for the district, K through twelve.
K through twelve, okay, it's K through twelve, right?
Um, one-to-one devices and then enhanced Wi-Fi availability. Um, during my COVID updates, I expressed from the podium that we're looking for community partners that have existing internet access across the park with, so we can go in and help them expand their Wi-Fi capacities. And had a lot of luck on that because in the areas where we need it most, they don't have internet connectivity. So our campuses, we're expanding the range of our Wi-fis on our campuses to two hundred, three hundred feet, that's about right, through technology. Yeah, through the, throughout the parking areas so that our kids can, can, if they don't have internet access at home, our students, just asking for one time a week for them to touch our network so that we can transfer the work that they've done. We can transfer assignments, instruction, and other, um, communications with the actual, uh, student in there. I was tempted to think about that, but just asking for one day to look at that.
I saw bullet point, but, and then I saw the answer on the one-to-one devices. You know, we had somebody in public comments say something about that. Can you just unpack the process of how it will look whenever a student wants a device or needs a device?
Yeah, there's some models out there across the state. Um, just some models where even the communities that have a higher rate of low socioeconomic status than Tyler, actually does provide, um, a little bit of a fee, not a huge one, but a little bit of skin in the game. Not a huge round number in there at all. We have not firmed that up yet. But we also know that some of the large urbs, about some large urban school systems that went to one-to-one in the spring had something like ten thousand Chromebooks, laptops that they did not get back. So the board's got to understand that if we don't have a little bit of skin in the game, then that is something, and these kids just kind of left. They don't really went. Maybe all of them can find them later. So we're, we're looking at, at our, the models that are already out there before making a determination on that. So I know the press is here tonight. And there's nothing to be, whether we are going to do that or that we're not going to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, that is, that is, that is an option there. I'm, I can't tell you where I'm leaning. Uh, one way or the other, we've got to be this steward of the resources that y'all employ out no matter what happens. Textbooks, they don't rent textbooks, but there is a fee if they do lose them or damage them. Um, that is certainly something that will be on the back end of this. We'll see what happens as that develops over time.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, just before you, when you just said about the fee. You said there will be a fee for each student within the district that get a Chromebook?
That is not been decided yet.
Okay, it won't be decided?
Yeah, and I'm not leaning one way or the other.
Okay.
Right now, it's just whether or not what your comfort level is going to be on that. But I'm, that's nothing, you know, money's a strategy no matter what the situation. You realize that. Um, but at the same time with that, the models I've seen do have some opportunities that they're free for lunch, discounted as well.
So the past, has the district done anything similar to this? Do we want to tap this going home students?
Not one-to-one, not eighteen thousand.
Right.
Yeah, but I don't think it's going to be that way anyway. Though, you know, there will be an opt-in of whether or not you want a tablet or a, or a Chromebook, um, or a device. If you don't have a device, um, strongly recommend that you have. The folks that have devices may not have to do that. But if you're saying that this is, we put fourteen or fifteen thousand of them out. What's the normal process of that? You check them out through the school and it goes on with the student.
Okay.
And the student back, back to school. That's with, when we haven't had a one-to-one initiative, now we're going to have a one-to-one opportunity here. So that's what we're talking about, devising whether or not to actually have a, uh, a fee associated with it.
Okay. Well, I, I noticed that on one of the documents on the website, on the information about returning school, I think it is one of those areas, it indicated that it be rented. So I wasn't sure about that. Just looking for verification of that.
Like I said, there's some, there might be some discounting, but we may adjust. I don't know. Uh, again, I don't really have a feel one way or the other on that. Or technically, I'm scorching me right now. It's not a straight up shoulder, so they're lost or whatever, what do you do to them? So, I mean, I, I think this is a philosophical thing. We'll see what, what it comes up with when the final thing gets out.
Another question about the, uh, access to the Wi-Fi within the community. I think we had mentioned about hotspots. Are we still looking into that? Is that still a possibility within communities? Uh, you talked about partnering with entities that existed in those communities, but that we don't even bother with that.
Buying hotspots.
Right. Well, buying them or having access to, I think something was mentioned about utilizing buses in areas or something like that.
Yeah, so that was what we kind of came up with was if you retrofit it, a, a bus, it was going to be, it wasn't going to be available at all times.
Okay.
In other words, you get the bus, somebody can pay drive, you'll sit with the bus. Let the Wi-Fi be available and then pay that drive, you have to be able to dock that bus back in the yard as well. So that's why we came up with, we were just going to expand our Wi-Fi ranges at our campuses.
Okay.
And hopefully you can get to those campuses. I was totally not speak. Get right up on, on this. Sorry.
What would that be?
Yeah, I know. I was worried about you being too close by that guy. So we're, we're going to wind up, uh, having our expanded ranges. That was the, that was the best that we could do. Uh, you know, most of the places that we think, uh, we have a lot of neighborhood schools uh, in our, in our school system. And so if you can get to one of those campuses, expanding the range, that we're not having to get right up on the door. You can sit in the parking lot or sit very close to the, to the parking lot or the yard of a campus. You can be able to, be able to use the Wi-Fi out there. Hotspots are a strategy, um, that some school systems are utilizing. Tasha says that it's fifteen dollars a month. Is that what they're saying on that?
Heard about. The, the use. The cost is pretty.
Right, but it's fifteen dollars a month. Okay. Is that typical?
Well, the first time we got a cost, it was like thirty dollars. But we did pull off that survey and they made the laws on the losses, but we would have to match it or have had that.
Yeah, so T E A provided a survey recently and funding may be on the way or opportunity may be on the way, um, under Operation Connectivity. I've kind of described that here, that that's a big push nationally to expand the broadband connectivity along with, uh, working with cellular providers on what, what could possibly be, um, at least during this pandemic, an opportunity for, for hotspots. Whether or not we're going to get that before school starts. We're going to have those, it's coming from the state, uh, as a passive through the feds if it happens. So something we're open to talking about on hotspots. As the in-school instruction, uh, that's a titty class in person, five days per week. I think you'll utilize the campus O M S and one-to-one technology wire school there. At the learning home is a digital learning opportunity that we were discussing. Both have real instruction, grades, attendance, and accountability. So that's a huge improvement than what we had, um, in the spring when we were all trying to figure this out. So yes, absolutely, that's going to wind up that. Both models have the same curriculum, scope and sequence, pacing and content. And you may have synchronous or asynchronous instruction going on. Synchronous means at the same time, um, that you see sometimes as far as a Zoom call. Think, to think of it that way, that that could potentially be happening with a group of students. A synchronous would be something that is recorded or filed in a learning management system for that student to access from their device. It may not match up with, with the synchronous, but they're not able to do it at that time as well. Attendance in both models will count in the same manner. Attendance is extremely important on this. T E A guidance for attendance is still evolving. Um, it's fluid, it's jumpy. Every day we get something different. Um, constituents, well, not every day, but it feels that way. Constituent services will assist in connecting, uh, remotely for students with attendance and engagement struggles. That's John Johnson's shop. He's got a team over there, I see it's in the building right over here, um, that will assist us in making sure that we're trying to figure out if someone's missing, if we can't find them, we will be able to locate them through our constituent services department, see what they need as far as resources go. That's support from the district level. The principals, we depend heavily on the principals. They're the ones that are going to know their students the best. Their teachers are going to know their students the best as far as being able to reach out to them. Once the principal struggles, uh, so much that, that they may not be able to connect with the students, then that's when they can engage with constituent services. Here's some other additional technology enhancements. Uh, we have access to Office 365 and certainly with the update of Google Docs, um, certainly that's a, uh, that's a, uh, the, the first two books are boozed for our staff as well. Microsoft Teams collaboration, that's a, a Zoom-like tool with inside of teams along with other types of, uh, messaging, et cetera, for intranet opportunities. Piling various options for in-classroom remote teaching and updating our virtual desktop infrastructure. That's V D I to enhance our video and audio. We struggle a little bit with the, uh, with the bandwidth and the, uh, when everybody was using it. I think everybody's kind of gone through this, but you kind of have a little bit of a, uh, slowing down, maybe some static or jumping. You can't get it all, but a bit of, of that V D I. Social emotional learning and mental health will be, we're all concerned about this. Getting trained our employees on mental health and trauma-informed grief awareness. Social emotional lessons on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, responsible decision-making. Y'all just approved a district-wide initiative for a leader in need program. Uh, as far as the, we want to get our kids good stuff and that's going to be able to be prompted. Try our teachers, our principals, our campus staffs trained so that they'll be able to provide that even in online environment. Outstanding things that kind of figured. Counselors will be available, obviously, in person, by phone, email, or virtually. And there are online referral forms on our campus websites. We want to make sure we emphasize that. We have Care Connect, assist new students with transition into new campuses, and then provide resources, information, assist students in families. Other student support services, this is where special education in five oh four are housed. Again, this is an executive summary of this before the full plan actually goes out for public consumption. Parent-study communication to ensure student progress and success. Again, this is special, a special education in five oh four. Program services, information released once individual plans are ident, are finalized. We still have I E P, the individualized education plans. Accommodations and modifications supported in face-to-face and virtual formats. I want to give a say kudos to our transportation department as they assisted our special education department and, and continue to serve students whenever we were back third of the school year before we missed those, uh, those in-person opportunities. We'll continue to have success there. Collect student data to make instructional decisions. Again, grades will be due. Feedback will be given by our, given by our teacher back to students. Special education services will be able to monitor that, uh, those intervention services virtually and in conversations with our campus staff as we go through this process. Return on our protocols. Um, we've got a lot of practice of this, this summer, whether it be working in our offices or through summer, uh, Rose City Summer Camp or through summer school. Obviously, everyone knows with the COVID-19 signs, symptoms, and this response, response to protocol protocols. Uh, we will train all of our staff that haven't been with us, uh, that have been experiencing this. Train students to step in hygienic, uh, practices such as hand washing and other mitigation practices. Social distancing whenever possible. When I was on a Zoom call, local, uh, fellow Scott Tyler, I think one of the persons on there said, you know, A and B days is six feet apart. And that was before Governor Abbott came out and said, you're going to be open every day. But the six feet apart thing, that's, that's extremely difficult. I mean, we're going to do the best we can to not stack people on top of each other. We're going to do a good job with kind of retraining how we walk in the hallways. Masks, wearing masks, make sure that we're protecting not only ourselves, but our peers and our friends and our colleagues. Masks, wearing masks, make sure that we're protecting not only ourselves, but our peers and our friends and our colleagues. It's kind of getting used to that. And that is going to be something that we are going to require. So the mask on our, on the age-appropriate kids, certainly, and then on our, on our staff as well. And I know that that's a hard thing to overcome. You're talking to a guy that it took me three months, four months to get wanting to do that. But it's my honor and my duty to protect Mr. Martinez and Mr. Martinez to protect me, who have been around each other a lot. Screening and isolation, starting to teach our staff how to, how to self-screen as far as what's going on. You know, all the different symptoms that, that you've read or the thing, if you don't have these symptoms, then you don't need to, to attend a meeting. If you don't have these symptoms, you don't need to participate. If you don't have any of these symptoms, then you're good under certain conditions if you're wearing a mask. We really expect our parent or guardian to screen the student before the school, before school starts. Parents cannot send the student to school if the student has COVID-19 symptoms. And the COVID-19 process map and flow chart for helping quarantine isolation and decision-making will be available. PPE, that's, who would have known what PPE was before we actually started this? I'm sure some of you military folks will understand what PPE is, but us civilians probably never knew what PPE stood for. Mr. Pope, you know what that stands for? Personal protective equipment. Students, this is up there on the screen, students and staff provided one reasonable use face covering. Disposable masks are available on campuses and buses, only when necessary. So think about how many masks we received, Rachel, here. In the other room, is it a hundred and ninety thousand masks? Something like that. So if you think about that, if we gave a mask to every one of our students every day, those are smart people, pulling out a mask on day eleven or twelve, if, if all eighteen thousand showed up on the same day. So those are going to be used for emergency purposes. Certainly we want to provide our staff, I think a lot of our staff are going to provide their own masks like we all do as well. We also received about two thousand face shields. Right now, we're thinking that those face shields will go to our teachers in the classrooms. We have about fifteen hundred there as well, considering bus drivers as well, the ones that are really. Hey, Rachel. Hundred ninety thousand masks, about there.
Hundred sixty-four thousand.
Hundred sixty-four, okay. How many face shields?
One thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand, two hundred.
Okay, so twenty-two hundred. So if y'all kind of get the gist on this as well. There's going to be a lot of free will at this, but there's also going to be a lot of requirements that we're going to want our staff to, to use in front of a person. There's the face shield, there you go. Parents who are responsible for cleaning regional masks, we're replacing them as time goes on. Being responsible citizens, just like y'all are. Campus visitors, visitors have to be approved, or, or, excuse me, district, approved district volunteers will be screened. That's still a, a subject we're discussing about districts campuses. Certainly with parents, that's a little different thing. Obviously, if your kid's up there, you can, you can access your child at campus. That's going to be something we really need to, to pay attention to. Still have them screened, obviously with taking inventory, et cetera. Essential meetings, maybe even after-school clubs at the secondary level held by a plumber in virtual format. Basic, basic every form according to the latest executive order. Again, this thing is so fluid, who knows what five weeks is going to look like from here. Outside delivery is limited to the front office and the front office alone. We, we're already doing a lot of these things. Obviously, you know, this illness, even though it is, it is a different type of illness, it does have some of the same characteristics of transmission as the things that we deal with very frequently. I.e. the flu and the common cold. So the use of electrostatic sprayers for superior sanitation is something we will be doing inside of our classrooms, in, in our school buses, in high traffic areas throughout our facilities. Nightly? So nightly operations, that correct? And that's what we're doing right now in Rose City Summer Camps as well. So we've got good practice, but we did order some of the solution enough to, to get us pretty far down the, in the school year. So supply chain is something that's been somewhat of an issue, but we were, we were ahead of, ahead of schedule on that. High touch points, special attention, professional grade cleaning products and techniques are, will be used daily. Hand sanitizer is available on buses, campus entrances, hallways, classrooms, common areas. Y'all seen a lot of that already around in our facilities. And then obviously disinfectant wipes provided in classrooms. Some, some folks have been asking about school supplies. So we may wind up saying, you know, school supplies might look a little bit different this year. We may want to ask for hands, or not hand sanitizer, sure hand sanitizer, but even the disinfectant wipes. And maybe instead of a couple, four packs of pencils, let's, let's do that instead of, because that's ridiculously expensive as far as the sanitizing wipes go. And where we, where we could run out in a very short amount of time after a big expenditure, that right, Tasha, we were talking about that at the end of the day. Health and safety protocols are a big deal. Specific plans will be included in the plan for entry, exit, and transitions so that we can reduce large groups in close contact. The good thing about our high schools is they're both going to be on block schedules this year. In former years, you're talking about a nine period, a nine passing period day. You've pretty much eliminated it in half or cut it in half to three, four, or five now. All areas of school operations, student experience is examined and we can re-admit, reimagine some of these things. Bus transportation, again, parents, students check temperature before entering the school bus each morning. Face masks worn on the bus. Hand sanitizer now at the entrance of the door. We'll continue to, to, to coach our students to be able to use those hand sanitizers when they get on the bus. Buses will be sanitized daily with electroback, electrostatic solution that we purchased in the fall. That's in a right electrostatic. After each round and between each shuttle, the career technology center. Lunch is a big question that people are wondering about. Breakfast and lunch in the cafe in our classrooms. That's going to kind of be a, a, a very fluid thing as well. We are looking at the possibility, strong possibility of grab and bill style meals, ask a question today. We don't have to limit ourselves to ham and turkey sandwiches for those grab and bill meals. Can we maybe do some hot pockets as part of that? Most of this should have a hot meal every now and then, a hot something every now and then. Looking, we actually have scanners for secondary student ID cards at checkout so there's not that exchange for, of money, et cetera, back and forth. And then again, the sprayers to sanitize the food serving areas and kitchens and the cafeterias between service times. Extra regular activities for as far as the UIL goes, I know that they, rumor was that they were trying to get something pushed out today. But because of the urban areas, I think going to these very restrictive, almost shutdown, I think that they're looking at, trying to figure out a way to, to, to adjust. You know, if, if, let's say Dallas County says that they're not going to do anything until middle of October. Well, Lee's district is us, three Mesquite schools, and then the two Rockwall schools. So Rockwall County's not, in that scenario, wouldn't be locked down, but Mesquite and Dallas, Dallas skyline is in there as well. And Dallas skyline would be. And so you're looking at a three-team district. So there's no doubt that UIL has a lot of challenges ahead of them because of the variations of the size of our school systems and our schools and where COVID is really impacting their communities and what that might do to extra clear activities. We've had good success so far with our summer camps on our, all our athletic teams, et cetera. And the minimum amount of time that we've had for our bands to, to begin preparations as well. Strict protocols for facility and equipment use and sanitation and actually coming to and from athletics and band, et cetera. We've had pretty good systems in place for that. And then obviously the practices and performance of, of all safety protocols. We have not got any guidance in regard to if we were to actually host a football game, what the crowd would look like at that time. What, what interaction the band would have, what cheerleading, cheerleading would look like as well. So once those things come down the pipe, we can insert those into our plan as best as possible. Human resources. There's something, we, Family First Coronavirus Response Act gives some opportunities in there for some FMLA-type of league. Is that right, Mr. Jones? You know what I'm saying, right? It's, it's pre, it is not very long. So if there's a COVID-related absence, absence by a staff person, it does wind up running out a little bit, or explain a little bit of that to, to, or put the microphone in front of you.
Are you talking with our Frigga?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what we refer to.
So our in-house, we refer to this Frigga.
Ah, yes, there are different stipulations depending on the employee's specific situation that governs what we do with them from an employee, your perspective and what they have to do. Whether it's a situation, if it's a child that's home and they have to be home with that, with that child, then there are certain stipulations that kick in at that time as opposed to if it's them that's being sent home to quarantine because they've come into exposure with someone. And it, there are several different bulleted points that are there with the Family First Coronavirus Response Act. That is, is kind of convoluted, but we have our in-house expert in our needs that deals with that and will get with that employee so that they know exactly what they are looking at as it pertains to them being out. If it's a situation, they may get two-thirds of their pay for two weeks, for a two-week period of time. They may be able to couple their, combine some of their sick time or leave, additional leave time to make up the difference in that pay for a specific amount of time. But scenarios differ and it depends on the specifics of that particular situation. And so we will definitely stay tuned in to that. And there's a process that the employee has to engage in order to take advantage of, I don't say take advantage of, but to engage the, the process. And it's located on our website.
We have staff surveys still out there, we've got seven days left on that. Substitutes will be needed throughout this process. And recruiting them, the orientation of training for special needs classes, and also safe schools are something that will be challenges for us to get those folks trained up and certified as a district substitute. Personnel planning, we have, we've been conducting new employee orientations. We have one today, it has its own calendar.
No, but they're not having, that's, it's only the twenty-eighth, it's only the twenty-eighth, yes.
Well, we've had a few of those already and we're having success in recruiting folks to come to Talon to, to work. Good-looking folks. And I think that our HR department, along with our campus principals, have done an outstanding job of filling our vacancies, traditional vacancies. And even here at this time, it's just kind of strange that we're having success, we're having as far as being able to recruit, recruit all the individuals, it's great, it's great. Adjustments made according to needs as well. So that's the executive summary. Certainly the, I hate reading their bullet point to you, but some of y'all I talked to felt like you needed a pretty in-depth exposure to this. We'll start with a large document that will be released later on. To, yeah. Any questions?
Just one question for us, outside the D.B. facilities, with front office now, like things that go to the cafeteria, will they check in at the front office and be delivered? Do their company or would our staff have to be doing that process?
Food service delivery?
There's the difference.
Um, usually those big trucks going around to the loading dock back there. So we will, we will have structures in place for them to be able to check their temperature, et cetera, and whatnot. And a lot of contactless deliveries, I'm sure, are occurring right now because they have to adapt from their own company's standpoint, not just the district's standpoint.
So on the buses, you said that the parents, we really need to ask the parents to make sure that their child does not have fever?
On the bus, it's, it's logistically impossible to check the temperature of every student who gets on our bus. Is that what we've, we've been talking to other districts about as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay.
So will we check again when they go to school?
When you do their campus, yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's why I want the mask worn on the bus. The parents should be encouraged to, the kids wear the mask the entire time on the bus.
So do we have a question here that, did your mom give you before asking if she puts you on the bus? Just curious.
Yeah, we, we, there's other districts, and we even looked into maybe an app for folks to, but we realized not everybody can, can fill out the app. But certainly a reminder every week that you can go on an add-on packet to be something that, that, that says that if you, you're certified and your, if your child's healthy, you can put them on the bus.
Yeah. So it's going to be imperative that the parent understand that responsibility.
Sure.
Of making sure that their child is not running a fever when they go on the bus.
That's correct. Any symptoms? Yeah.
Issue of employee continuity. Until we talked about benefits for people who have a kid at home, I've just been thinking about students and teachers, but they're also parents as well. Are there best practices or guidelines around determining when we don't have enough people to actually do school? Situations where we may have to close an individual school purely because of personnel availability?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable leading the number that, you know, I took a kid, this is unprecedented. You know, our secondary campuses, they may have a, a way around this. They've got a ton of people. Our secondary campuses have the most staff of any of our campuses. Will they can do some things to where monitoring or covering the classroom with support staff and then using our LMS may provide some relief on that. Where I'd really be concerned about would be the LMS level because they're, they're pretty tightly staffed as it is. So I, I do think you bring up a good point and will be something that we'll have to keep, we'll monitor, keep an eye on. Same thing on the actual buildings is, it's going to be a foot. It's going to have to be something that's monitored on a very routine and regular basis to determine the actions that we do toward that campus as well. We kind of talked about this back in the spring, we thought we're going to come back a little bit there. How would you handle that when we all thought we were going to be out for a couple of weeks? And I think it's the same philosophy there, that there's not a firm number that you utilize to say that that campus shall shut down at that number. I think it's going to be one of those, our, our capacity and our tolerance levels on maybe the oldest year of one.
Have we considered increasing the number of substitute teachers that we have in our, is there?
We're always, we're always looking for substitute teachers. There's no doubt about that. But hiring more teachers, we have, we're pretty tightly staffed. For one, because, you know, if you saw this today, the comp center said, I think we're four point nine billion in the hole. Already protected with fiscal twenty-one. So that's this next coming fiscal. And so we've already done a lot of preparation for, for that. And I think that's about what we increased public debt this, this last time. So I think that that's going to be something that's going to be pretty, pretty imperative that we keep an eye on as we roll this next school year. And we have done some preparation upfront for that. Criticize or not about that, I think that that was a smart thing that the board allowed us to do. So going and hiring more, hiring more teachers to be pinch hitters and be on deck in case something happens. Available funding is going to determine that as we go forward. As far as actual substitute teachers, we're always wanting to be the large pool of substitutes. And I think we offer pretty attractive pay and opportunities there. So if you're listening tonight and want to be a substitute teacher, call HR.
Well, I know it's a fluid situation.
Well, I know it's a fluid situation. Day to day, we're always finding out something new or some order or something like that, so we've got to be flexible. I appreciate you giving us all this information. If you have a crystal ball, starting on time. As far as the calendar goes? Yeah, why are you asking? Because people want to know. Look, the cameras are all in it. Had to be asked. Look, it's, we're five weeks out, right? And that's not my style, or it's not your style, to make that call in this far advance. Now, some of the larger districts have to do some things logistically to make that announcement here. I think we're in good position to start on time. If we need to adjust, we can adjust. We've built on days on the back end of our calendar, and who knows? If the data, if the state, if that, if the environment requires us to do that, then yeah, that's a strategy. But I'm not committing one way or another on whether or not we're willing to start later. Right now, the plan is to start August 19th. Whether that be in-person or digital, we should have a vote.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions about that presentation or comments? Okay, thank you for that. Now, moving on to I C High School names submission process and timeline, obviously, is something we're curious about.
So, there's a proposed name change timeline. We had a little bit of discussion before during the policy conversation. This is actually the timeline. Again, I'm game free on the given advisor, guidance, or direction if you want to change this, but my understanding was we wanted to try and maybe get this done prior to school start. We have a board meeting on August 6th, so we kind of started from there and worked backwards. That's a special institute, it's a workshop. So, August 6th workshop, we're backwards from there. Here's tonight, presents the timeline, already adopted policy. District sends immediate advisory on dates and processes for campus name submission that should require an authorized meeting. That will correct the signs. That's correct. Tomorrow morning, the district opens its campus name submission window on our website, right there on the front. It runs through August 3rd. Emails and other submissions will be accepted. If you want to send an email to us, we'll figure out where to hit it. If you don't want to actually do the actual online submission. But it needs to meet policy criteria for official consideration. We'll collect everything, but as far as official consideration goes, please meet policy criteria. We will send out frequent communication to parents, students, and constituents that we have contact information for. Obviously, the media's here tonight, the digital media's here, and the print media's here tonight. I'm sure they'll do a good job in continuously reinforcing on this issue, as they have reported on it. Communication to our parents and our students, our constituents, email, texts, phone calls, social media, and obviously on Tom or ISPTV, Channel 19, so. First reminder, campus name submission will be sent to parents on Saturday, July 25th, and constituents and students. Again, y'all know how we're going to do this. I think social media is a really good platform to remind folks about how to do that. There will be a link on those reminders that actually will take you to the district webpage so you can actually put your submission in on your recommendation. Those recommendations, you will put on, you'll put a phone number on there, you'll put an email address, and actually put your address on there as well. So, if someone from Germany, we're not going to give too much credence to someone who's living in Germany. So, the title there. Focus group meets to review on, and discuss collected submissions and consider possible campus name recommendations on July 27th and July 29th. Another reminder goes out on July 30th. And then a final reminder on August 3rd will be sent out as well on 12:00 PM. The district, that's noon, the district will close the campus name submission window. Focus group meets again that day to review the final submissions, provide further input to the executive director communications. August 6th, our workshop agenda is going to be posted about 11:00 AM that day. We won't post the recommendations on there, they'll be brought together, August 6th, our workshop. But we will post the agenda that says that y'all have discussion and possible action to choose. August 4th, Ms. Heinz, executive communication will provide the focus group comments and list of possible name submission. Focus group meets one final time as the Thursday, August 6th, is the 11:00 AM more workshop. No more than three names per school to the boards, and the board selects new names. And then, we're going to have a discussion of phase-in logistics and timelines. For instance, right now, my recommendation, and we only need to talk about it again, y'all need to think about this, is to not spend any more money on, right now, on the infield of the name that's already out there. I think that we should wait until Christmas to do that. Now, y'all, that's just an idea as far as Legos and JT. I think we need that space to be pretty clear, because it's going to take two weeks for install. And it's also going to wind up the, or two weeks for demolition as well. And I think if you wind up trying to rush and do all that right now, you're going to wind up, we have school starting. So, if we could consider lots of waiting for the name to take off before Christmas time, as opposed to just doing that, I think that the symbolic gesture would have been made, pray y'all support last Thursday. Let's get the name decided, let's order the materials, and do the, I hate calling it demolition, but let's do the replacement of the front of the schools at that time when students are not going to the school. That'd be something we all would think about. That's what we're talking about, discussion of phase-in logistics and timelines, along with apparel. That was another topic of discussion, and how are we going to handle the apparel situation? As well as VPA, as far as getting, taking care of all the different cases and things like that. You have other things that should be talked about as well, talking about all orders and things like that. We need to figure out how we're willing to adjust, to adjust those to fit the board's vision for what y'all chose to do last Thursday. And then whatever name that you choose, ready to move. So, that's my timeline. Tell them a week for y'all to consider. Any questions on that?
When you said students, are you talking about just the local schools? Or can previous students, alumni students vote, or is it just?
Yeah, I refer to those as constituents.
If they live in Germany?
If they live in Germany, that is a bad example. You've got to have a connection to this community to be able to participate in this for validity purposes, more than anything. And I think that that's really interesting, that's the best way we can capture it as well. Of course, we've got the focus group that's kind of monitoring that as well, that we think that can kind of help sift through some of those things that may be so far out there that they don't need to be in front of you all.
Okay. Now, thanks for lining that out. I think that it's very clear, and I appreciate that students and coaches and principals, constituents be part of that process. And I think it's well-rounded. I think it's, it's plenty of time for people to submit, I mean, submit names for review. And then, but it's also quick enough for us to go ahead and act on. Should we choose to on possibly August 6th, depending on how the debate goes? So, and then we can discuss those next steps in August, and I'm sure plenty of people want to talk some of that. Any other comments on this?
Comment, what comments? I would comment, because I was real concerned about return to learn. And this information is currently on the website, and anybody that access it, I'm going to record it to the website, finding it.
Executive something? Is this on the website? Executive something?
It will be tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, great. Great, that's good, that's nice enough. Because I have problems finding it, you know? So, I'm learning.
One comment on the proposed name change. I do agree with the assessment that there's plenty of time for the community provided, but a little anxious about the board finding out on August 6th what the recommended names are. It just written, it just says the list of the new names. If we're going to narrow it down to a list, it would probably be, I know I personally would like some time to consider those names and not be asked to make a decision in the very same meeting that management out the names are. I don't know how that impacts website rollout, you know, the issues that you're wrestling with here. But that would be, unless somebody picks some awesome names that just, you don't even need to think about. It seems like having a step in here where we get the opportunity to consider these and get feedback on them as well, that would be important for, hopefully, these are names that last 15-plus years. Just one thought off the cuff is if we wanted some time to review, possibly if we want to come back with a special call, get together, you know, shortly thereafter, you know, give us a few days to let them see again. We can do that. What we do is some time to think about that workaround. I think that August, having at least three August 6ths is important to me. Go ahead and have that final list, and then have discretion for the rest of the board, whoever. Everybody else thinks we can decide if we want to kind of have some sort of special call, meeting to make a final decision. If we need it, I don't know, maybe there's.
August 6th is a Thursday, so remember, you've got to have seven to two-hour files, special call meeting, so. Rules, rules, rules.
Yep.
Y'all know.
Which would be, yeah, I mean, we could even, we can set it for the next Monday or Tuesday.
Even if they have to follow them, but I think I agree with Mr. Hager about the having a, you know, project meeting or something so that we can review it and think about it before making that decision all in at one second. I think that that's quite the pressure for that panel and not thinking things sometimes thoroughly enough. So, if there's some way that that can be built into the timeline that we would have access, and naturally, we would not publicize that information without permission. So.
It'll be public as soon as you get it. So, there you go.
Well, that might be as bad as what I think.
I've heard, so I think that that, we can certainly go ahead and consider maybe on that Monday or Tuesday, a special call meeting. But here's what, I think we leave it open, we'll make a vote that day in camp. If not, we'll go ahead and have that posted, and then we got to cancel, cancel. But that way, you can get to the names, y'all can do whatever you want to do with it, because it's your base. Choose not to do anything on that date, and y'all can get it on a special call meeting.
I don't like how fresh it's sales, so I don't like to make decisions.
I'm not going to pitch anything to you, but I can understand the pressure that you're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, sounds fair.
Yep.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on that specific agenda, Adam, before we move on to future business?
Special call meeting, that might be also.
All right. Special meetings are fun. Okay, so future business, we have school, school, more workshop. Those are both August 6th. August 19th, they asked your first name, school, first students.
Thank you.
And then, we have a regular meeting on August 24th, and maybe in between there, a special call meeting.
Yeah, August 10th, they said.
August 6th.
Those were, yeah, school, schools, people live in, feeling a little different this year being drive-through, but I think their backpacks are still going to be provided. Backpacks are still going to be provided to our community, to our very relevant partners. The Chamber does a great job, the Business Education Council does a great job, we want to make sure we give her a shout-out, does a great job of executing that program. In case y'all didn't know, last year, every backpack that was provided was bought, I think, by UT Tower. And then, we were able, other colleges were able to stuff everything, all the supplies and those backpacks. Of course, every backpack, Dr. Tewel made sure they had a UT Tower emblem logo on it. So, it's a great recruiting tool for all our kids there.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead, for some other comments or questions, entertain the most for Germany.
Who?
If they would say aye, aye, all of those. All right. E D is here.